Are you guys ready? Are you ready? Okay.
Hello?
We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Tonight, our chair and vice chair are not present, so I will be the second vice chair, I guess. I don't know if we have such a label. But I've been appointed tonight just to go ahead and lead the meeting. So welcome, everybody, and we'll start off with a, well, first procedure for public comment. The members of the public will be allowed to address the board with respect to items listed on the agenda only. The law requires that business not appearing on the agenda may not be discussed at a special meeting. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item about which you wish to speak and present it to the board clerk. Okay, and with that, we'll start with a roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Deeganmeier. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Okay, and if you would all rise, ask Supervisor Baines to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay. We have, first, any public comment? Do we have any public comment cards? Okay, there being no public comment cards. We begin the study session of the county's fiscal year 2024-25 budget. And do we go to a closed session now then, or immediately?
No, it will be after the.
After that, okay, I see what you have going on. Okay, so we begin now the study session.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Steve Smith, County Administrator. This is the fourth consecutive year the Board of Supervisors has held a budget workshop to receive an update on the progress of the annual budget preparation process. The Board originally asked for a workshop for a number of reasons, including enhancing public transparency of the budget process and having a chance to review information before the recommended budget is submitted to the public and board, and to provide preliminary direction to staff related to the recommended budget. We're going to briefly cover some basic information about counties in California, review general information and information specific to Sutter County, and provide an overview of the budget process and address Sutter County budget and financial policies. The county administrative staff will be presenting much of it, and I will cover a few slides here and then turn it over to them until towards the end for a few additional slides. So also, Jamie Yang couldn't be with us tonight like the Supervisors. She's also ill but is with us in spirit. She helped us greatly with this presentation, so. So, all right, we're on the second slide, thank you. What is a county and why does it matter? So unlike cities, counties are political subdivisions of the state, which can be frustrating at times and maybe even surprising at times for residents to learn that. But we are very closely linked to the state. We administer federal and state mandated programs, which happens to be our largest funding source, primarily through Health and Human Services. We provide countywide services, and we also provide municipal-type services in the unincorporated areas. State and county finances are inextricably tied together. One does not function without the other. Over the years, though, of course, financial autonomy of counties has been eroded and multiple reassignments of state programs, including 1991 realignment of health, social services, and behavioral health programs, 2011 criminal justice realignment, and recent legislation involving conservatorships. Next slide, please. So I won't read all of these, but this is just. Who do we serve in the different services? These services are specific to counties, so they're not handled by special districts or cities. You see a wide variety from Health and Human Services-type activities to elections, to public safety, agriculture, the arts, and more. Also, we have some specific functions for the unincorporated areas only. Building inspection, emergency operations. We technically also help cover cities and can make declarations for cities. Fire services and emergency response, including live oak and land use and planning, et cetera. Also, we have a number of internal services, specific just supporting departments such as administration, auditor controller, building maintenance, and more. So why does the relationship between the state and the county matter? Well, one, because we're tied financially at the hip, a lot of times our fortunes are also, our revenues are tied to theirs. The state claims they have a $37 billion deficit for fiscal year 24-25, but other offices, such as the Legislative Analyst's Office, think it could be up to double of that. So the state continually puts, places programs with counties, like I mentioned with some of the realignments earlier, but also at times take a portion, say 50% of the funding that it took them to complete a task at the state level. They shift it to counties and keep the additional 50% savings for themselves. So it makes it very difficult for local, regional jurisdictions to complete the tasks that the state has mandated. As mentioned, we have multiple examples, including over time releasing prison inmates to local communities, designating local jails as local prisons, which has resulted in great increases to costs in the jail. Over the past 11 years, the jail medical program budget has gone up by about 10 times. There's also a ballot measure for 2024 that could impact the ability to raise local revenue, requiring local tax measures, even if they're general. Typically, now they're 50% plus one vote. It would move those to a two-thirds vote of the electorate. So I'll turn it over to staff at the moment. We have a decent amount of detail, but we'll try to be thorough, yet pay attention to the time, and then I will leave time for comments and questions at the end.
Good evening, Supervisors. Laura Granados, Deputy County Administrator. So what we're going to be covering tonight is a review of the budget process, county policies relating to the budget, and discretionary revenue sources, capital projects, vehicles, and do a high-level summary of all those high-dollar item purchases. Our primary focus is the general fund, because that's the fund that you have the most discretionary decision over. And then we'll wrap it up with areas of concern. The fiscal year 24-25 budget process, it's an annual process that begins in December, and it's when we bring the budget calendar to you, and you adopt the calendar and the policies that we move forward with for the year. In January, the CIO releases budget instructions to departments, and we always ask them to not increase the general fund, have an additional impact, which is very difficult to do with the increases in costs. We all know in our own personal home budgets, it's very hard to have less discretionary spending and have so much that we need to do with it. And so, and it's especially difficult for smaller departments. By March, departments have submitted their budgets to the CIO, and we begin the meetings with them. We begin analyzing all the expenditures, all the revenues, just to make sure that everything is reasonable and that we understand what's in those budgets. And they do a great job. This was a hard year, and they've done a really great job. And so it's very hard, after vetting each number and all the hard work that you all have done, to be in this situation. And I just want to reflect that back to you all. You know, your hard work is definitely noticed and appreciated, and it's not very great to still be here. So, anyway, thank you for all of that. In April, of course, we hold our budget study session, and we will identify to you some of the concerns that we have. We will bring a recommended budget back to you by early June for your review. And then, at the end of June, we will bring back to you the recommended budget to tentatively approve. And this is so we continue our business effective July 1. And then we will bring, or we'll start the budget hearings at the end of August, and then we'll bring the budget after the fiscal year 23-24 closes. We'll bring it to you for adoption in September. That way, we reduce the amount of budget adjustments that we have to that recommended budget. Then, December 1, the Auditor Controller submits that budget to the State Controller's Office, and we start the budget season over again. So for those of us who love budget, it's a great thing. So in January of this year, your Board approved the Budget and Fiscal Management Policy. And in that policy, you had given us some parameters of where you wanted it to be. So generally, the Governmental Financial Officers Association says we recommend that reserves are set anywhere between 5% and 15%. And you were conservative, and you said, you know, we'll do 5%. We're a poor county, but we still want to be fiscally sound and responsible. So we set the general reserve at 5% of general fund appropriations, and currently, we are at 3.9 million, and that's because of your discretion. The target is approximately 4.4, so we still aren't quite there yet, but we're working towards that. You also decided to have a reserve of 5% for budget stabilization, and currently, we're at 3.9 on that one, and again, that target is 4.4. You also chose to put in forth a policy to include 1.5% of general fund appropriations each year for contingency. And these three all kind of work together to help support the cash in our general fund, because we don't want our cash to ever go negative. We want it to stay positive at all times. And having these reserve balances not only have the reserve for a rainy day, but they also help to support the cash in the fund so that it doesn't go negative. As you'll hear about a little bit later, our property tax revenue, we receive about January. And so from July to December, we're having to spend money on general fund departments to keep them going without any revenue dollars. So this helps keep the general fund positive. And then, part of the policy, you also said that you wanted to pre-fund the pension funds. And so we, in February of 2024, we did contribute the 1.1 as we had, as you had chosen to ask us to do. And so that is also in the Budget and Fiscal Management Policy. Property tax revenue is flat, unfortunately, for our area, and it's a modest growth of about 3.7%. And the reason is that our tax base is just stagnant. We don't have a whole lot of development in the unincorporated areas. And so this is a big revenue source for us, for the county, and to have it being so stable and flat does make things difficult, because our expenditures rise more than our revenue is. Similarly, for sales tax revenue, we see some ups and downs, because it is more reactive to the economy. When it did go down there in 2021, of course, COVID, and then everybody in the online shopping, so it spiked right up. But then, we had the distributing centers say, you know what? We don't want to pay taxes to the local areas that are generating these sales taxes. We want to have the taxes be from where we're distributing. And so those counties have received more tax revenue. And the small rural counties that do more online shopping, of course, were penalized, which is unfortunate. We still do have an average growth of 5.5%, which is pretty good considering. But of course, we'd like that to be higher always. And the great thing also about sales tax revenue is not only does it come into the general fund, but it's also an indicator that pays some of our realignment funds. They're based on sales tax revenues at the state level, too. And then the last revenue source that I'm going to cover tonight is the American Recovery Plan Act. And basically, this is just to remind you that back in January, we did fully commit the fund balance, the remaining 2.4 million. We chose to commit to stabilize CSAF, and whatever was remaining for 24-25 will go to the Public Safety Fund. And so there is no more ARPA funds to rely on. And so we wanted to bring that to your attention as we're having these tough talks. And so now, on to capital projects. We're going to do just a real high, high-level summary of these, like I mentioned earlier. Instead of detailing what every single one is, if you wanted to have a list of each project, we could do that as well. These are the projects that have the most general fund impact. And the general, in fact, is 1.5 million. The agricultural commissioner, some of them, they'll say, oh, well, I'm part general fund, and I have part special revenue funds. And that's true, like for the Clerk Recorder, she has some special revenue funds. She wanted to contribute for these remodeling efforts. And so, anyway, so that's a list of all the capital projects. This isn't an exhaustive list, but it gives you an idea of some of the requests that we have received. Second slide on capital projects is all the non-general fund impacts. And the total request is 2.9 million. And these are all capital projects that are not going to hit the general fund. There's grants, there's realignment, there's all types of special revenue funds that can pay for these different types of things that folks are needing to do for their buildings and to help upgrade important structures and for social services to consolidate the child welfare program. And this is a list of the capital asset requests. This list is exhaustive. They are all included. The total request is 1.34 million. And there's only two items on here that were, at the time of printing, going to be paid for with general fund, but the sheriff has already updated us, thank you very much, that they have some cops money that they want to use, and I forget the other fund. But they've already said that they have another way to pay for those items. So that's about $100,000 that won't be hitting the general fund. And then I'll pass it on to Taylor.
Good evening, Supervisors. So I will continue with some of the areas that departments have requested to basically spend our revenue. Right now, we have vehicle requests. So this year, departments have put in a request for 14 vehicles at a total cost of $723,000, which is pretty reasonable, given our needs. We're a county that is not living large here. We have a tight belt. The vehicles of these 14 vehicles, 10 of them are replacements for vehicles we have. We have vehicles as old as 2004, multiple 2004 vehicles. We have a 2008 vehicle. We have vehicles with a ton of mileage, and they are expensive to maintain. We have four new vehicles I'll just call attention to. One is to move homeless services staff between service sites. We have a vehicle that we have a need for, for the Care Corps program, which the state has sent down to us. We have Mental Health Services Act programs, and then we have one for fraud investigation for social services. So altogether, just continuing the operation of the county, and newer vehicles help us avoid high maintenance costs. Next slide. Oh, am I supposed to do it? So next, we have IT requests. I have two slides of this. One is general fund impacts, and one is for non-general fund impacts. So of the general fund impacted IT requests, there's only two items totaling $56,000. One is for a GIS building footprint images, which is essentially an update to get 2025 images of the physical buildings in our county, which help a number of departments. And then also, we have a request for the public defender to get a case management software. This is the same one the DA uses. As we talked about just this past Tuesday, you know, it's a very hard department to run. It's hard to attract people to work here. And having a modern case management system will allow them to do their job better with the limited resources they have. For non-general fund impact IT requests, this is a total of $2.3 million. I'm not going to go through the list. We have another, we have, you know, just replacement items, basically. We have patrol vehicle computers, we have audio and video systems, we have Wi-Fi access points. This is just general IT that we need to support the county. So with that, I'm going to pivot away from our, you know, our income and our areas that we might be spending the money, and I'll turn towards the areas that we have of concern. As Laura alluded to, we do have a budget gap that we are trying to address here, and these concerns make our life more difficult with respect to addressing that budget gap. The big categories here are that we are deficit spending. Our salaries and benefits are becoming less valuable in the market as we compete for employees. We have spending in CSAF. We have increased public safety costs, homelessness costs, behavioral health. And then, as Steve alluded to earlier, we have state encouragement on local funding. And I'll touch on each of those briefly. So with deficit spending, that essentially means we're spending more each year than we're raising in that particular year. Generally, we're able to roll over a little bit of money from the previous year that we didn't spend, mostly because our departments are very good at not spending their maximum budget allocation, but that's not enough. And this example, this is just one of the many examples we have of spending in an area that is higher than our amount of revenue. So if you look on this chart here, the blue line is the net county cost for public safety. So this is the amount that we are contributing from the general fund beyond any sort of recovery they can get from other sources. And then the green line is our Prop 172 money, which is the money that the sales tax at the state level has to contribute to public safety. So as you can see, the green line on the bottom there, the money we're getting from the state and from sales tax, it's up a little bit, but it's basically flat. And our costs from the general fund in this area for public safety are going up every year. One item to call your attention to is that you'll notice that in 2019, it looks like we hit a plateau and then we go down. But that's misleading, because in fact, in 2019, we contributed $6.2 million of our CARES funds to public safety. Two years later, in 2022, we put $11.5 million of ARPA. And this year, we are projecting to put just under $1 million of ARPA into public safety as well. So in fact, this blue line is, in fact, much steeper. And with the ARPA and the COVID money going away, that line is just going to keep impacting the general fund, whereas the green line, the Prop 172, is going to remain flat. So with salaries and benefits, as the Board knows, and as the public is well aware, we've had to give raises over the years because we are unable to recruit employees. We are still underpaid compared to the market, and it makes it really hard for us to recruit people. We've had multiple failed recruitments. And also, we have a situation where the applicants we do get are not at the level that we're looking for for the particular role. We also have a situation where if people aren't getting paid well, and they can go to a different county, you know, or maybe even move. They take their institutional knowledge with them, and that affects us more than just the dollar amount that it costs to have them on staff. We do have extended vacancies in revenue-generating positions, which means that areas like, let's say, the Recorder's Office, for example, even though I don't believe that's been a significant vacancy. But if there's no one to record a document for you, if there's no one to process a password for you, we're not getting that money. So saving the money with a vacant position doesn't actually help us. It ends up hurting us. And then finally, we have employees are burned out. If they're understaffed in their department and they're having to work the job of two people, they get burned out. So for CSAF, since 2020, following the Board's priorities, we have spent a significant amount of discretionary or semi-discretionary funding sources to pay for CSAF beyond the amount that is being raised in the CSA, to a total of over $5 million. We spent over $1 million of general funds for CSAF. We've put about $360,000 of our CARES Act funds towards that. And then we've put an additional two, or just over $2 million of our ARPA funds, which is 20% of the total ARPA funds. So this is following the Board priority. But there is a concern that the county using these type of funds to support a CSA is not in line with the original formation of a CSA. A CSA is something that's created by state statute where a local area can create, it's kind of a pseudo-special district, where they don't have an independent Board of Directors. The Board, this Board is their Board, but it's intended to generate funds locally to pay for services locally. And as you can see, we're spending over $5 million in contradiction of that. Additionally, even of our Prop 172 funds that we're sending there, spending those in that area compromises the other services that Prop 172 could be spent on. So kind of returning to my example of deficit spending, we have increased public safety costs. This is a core county function, but it's not the only one. We have other areas that we have a requirement to spend on to serve our community. And we also have discretionary areas that we would like to serve our community with, with our funds. With Prop 172 funds projected to be flat, we just essentially are ending up in a situation where it's causing a concern for the county with our ability to have a flat revenue source, but to continue increasing costs. So I'll just briefly touch on homelessness, we've been over this before. Our ongoing efforts are we're continuing to clean up encampments. We have our Better Way Shelter. We've got the overnight Second Street Camping, which is really a low entry. You know, we'll let you in there, just a place to lay your head. And this has costs. So as you can see, over the years, we've gone from just about $700,000. We went down a little bit in the pandemic, and now we're up to $1.6 million projected for 24-25. So this does dramatically impact our funding. So this slide really does touch on what the state has been doing to us as a county that Steve alluded to in the beginning. The state is putting us in a situation where we have risk and uncertainty around programs that the state has mandated us to fund and to provide, but they're not necessarily giving us more revenues to do so. So Care Corps is coming out right now. There's no significant funding increase to pay for that. And already, we're seeing here and around the state that this is going to be an expensive program to implement, in part because we're going to have people entering conservatorships that we're going to need to fund with our public guardian and other funding sources. We have Prop 1, which just passed a couple months ago. And this is completely restructuring the Mental Health Services Act into the Behavioral Health Services Act. The biggest thing is diverting some money that used to go to homeless services and other services of that, or, and, sorry, just mental health services generally. And trying to direct a lot of that towards housing, which, as a statewide goal, may be admirable, but in terms of our ability to serve our citizens here in this county, it can be a problem for us. And it's unknown at this point how much of an impact that is. And Sarah is, I don't know where she is, right there, addressing this on a daily basis. We also have Calium and other Thorne and Sarah side, changing the way we're getting paid from the state, which is just another thing that's going to end up costing us money, whether it's administrative or, Sarah, I could speak to it more. So the rest of them, I'll just kind of, you can read them. We have SB 43, I just wanted to call your attention to. We haven't brought that to the Board in very much detail before. But one of the biggest things about SB 43, especially as it goes in coordination with Prop 1 and also with the Care Corps, kind of the governor's statewide change to mental health serving in the country or in the, in the state, is that it changes the definition of what it means to be gravely disabled. And being gravely disabled means that a court can place you into conservatorship. So if we have an easier standard to be considered gravely disabled, that could be a lot more people under conservatorships. And conservatorships can be very, very expensive. And for many people who enter them, it's kind of a one-way in, and there's really no way out, especially depending on certain types of mental health disorders, or let's say alcoholism, where you might not be able to cure that. There's no pill you can take. And then finally, you know, we have a Bi-County effort, which is, you know, it can be really difficult to do that, especially when we're dealing with statewide changes. And with that, I will hand it back to Steve.
Okay, so just another slide or two. But so before going down a few of these proposed budget solutions, I just wanted to mention, and these are things that the county has talked about for the past several years, but that Sutter County saves taxpayer money by having multiple partnerships with surrounding jurisdictions. More partnerships locally than I'm aware of in other jurisdictions throughout the state. We're the only two counties with behavioral health, shared behavioral health service with Sutter and Yuba. Sutter, Yuba, and Colusa share juvenile hall. Sutter, Colusa, and Yolo share child support services. Sutter, Live Oak and Yuba City share animal control services. Sutter and Live Oak partner on fire and law enforcement services. And we're fortunate to have so many good partnerships throughout the region. There's many more that I could talk about. But another thing is on trying to save taxpayer dollars is Sutter County is very lean on staffing. I've mentioned before that we have the second. I've mentioned before that we have the second least employees per capita of the 31 counties in California with a population under 200,000. Current staff in many departments, including unrepresented workers, are commonly 20% to 40% below market rates compared to surrounding and comparable counties. It requires us, you know, to be innovative. And in fact, the county won the CSAC Innovation Award, the only one out of nearly 400 entries for its creativity in recruiting HHS staff. So we know we have quality employees and putting quality programs to use to save money and be creative in getting good staff on board. So of proposed budget solutions, and I will hear the public at time mention the Gray Avenue Building, the former Kmart building. That is up for being marketed for sale. And when that sells, that money is one-time money that would be used for other facility needs that we have. And those needs are great. And that's why we purchased that property in the first place. Most know that with the great inflation through the COVID pandemic, it made that overall project infeasible. But we still have other needs to address. Reducing services in the Walton Annexation Area, so the sheriff patrols areas of the city. Yuba City continues to explore a possible 1% sales tax measure for the city for November. If approved, over time, that would transition back to the city for patrols. We've looked at a hard hiring freeze on nearly all vacant general fund positions. You can't do all of them because there are, you know, certain mandated services that we have to meet. We do some small things like deferring vehicle replacements, eliminating certain capital projects. And what it comes down to eventually is a possible reduction in services. As I mentioned, the board, staff, the county in general have been very transparent about the need for increased revenue. We have uncommon revenue limitations in Sutter County due to about 80% of the county being undevelopable due to either the buttes or FEMA floodplain issues for the most part. We've given dozens of presentations over the past several years at town hall meetings, service organization meetings, neighborhood meetings. We mailed information on this to most households in the county. We've appeared on radio, television, social media, and in the newspaper. And the possibility and impact of service cuts was discussed time and time again. At this moment, departments are currently very closely reviewing their budget requests and examining their budget projections for this current fiscal year to ensure we can maximize roll-forward savings. We don't have a current budget gap number that we've honed into yet, and we will very soon with these updated estimates. But it's my strong belief, based upon 15 years of preparing budgets for the county, that we'll not be able to close that gap without service reductions. We will have, of course, recommendations to close that budget gap. And if it involves service reductions, we'll have that before it goes to the printers at the end of May. And we'll have additional information available for the public and board. We do have some bright spots, some opportunities. Most of us are aware of the Sutter Point specific plan in the South County bordering Sacramento County. The developers recently have begun trenching for the sewer pipes. And that infrastructure will be brought up from Sacramento to the lakeside at Sutter Point Development. With that infrastructure comes the opportunity to extend it to commercial and industrial zones. That can bring a great amount of jobs and corresponding revenue into the county, much like you see in those very, very large warehouses down close to the Sacramento Airport in Sacramento County. And also, as I mentioned before, the possible sales tax that Yuba City is exploring. As mentioned at the joint city-county meeting in December, we have a tentative agreement and are ironing out the details on a written agreement for both the city council and board supervisors to consider where approximately a third of that revenue would be shared, which in the first year for Sutter County would result in about $5.7 million. So I'd really like to thank everyone that's here tonight. And I think it's all county employees except one, maybe. And the department heads, assistants, their financial staff, for all the hard work they've done so far on the budget. We'll keep working diligently on it to close that gap. And happy to answer any questions.
Back to the board for any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. I just want to thank you for the presentation. As Laura mentioned earlier, that your hard work is noted and appreciated. And that goes to all departments and all employees of Sutter County. We really appreciate all that you do. And we're thankful for your service and dedication to the county. I guess for the department heads, this isn't your first rodeo. So tighten your belts and, or get ready to tighten your belts by really tight. And hold on that no one says it's supposed to be easy, or it's going to be easy. But we'll make it through it together and hopefully don't endure too much pain going through it. But thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Zigmar?
My point's exactly, um, like, so we do, we have all the departments here, all the department heads here tonight? All right, well, it looks like it for the most part. Well, thank you for coming out and missing the NFL draft tonight. Hopefully, your teams get who they chose. He's right. It's tough. It is really tough. In my business, their business, it's tough. And it all starts out with a lot of our state mandated issues. If the state says, hey, we're going to mandate you do this, and we're going to fund it, but we're not going to guarantee the 100% funding of it. But you're going to do that. You know, we're going to throw these guys in your jail, and we're going to expect you to take care of it. And we're going to fund most of it. We'll take care of it. But whatever's left over, or whatever the cost, elevated costs or extra costs, you handle it. And we've had some great meetings this morning. Steve and myself and our, and our fire chief, I really appreciate that in your, in your time. I personally hope, and I know my colleagues do the same thing. I hope that each and one, each and every one of you department heads have, has some time to spare over the next few months. And we could sit down and have some one-on-one time and just talk about your individualized budget. So we could really, everything's really going to come down to the nitty-gritty. Because at the end of the day, it's public safety and making sure we're functioning. In the meantime, like I said, I want to see a positive deal. You know, we had a great meeting with $150, $150 million agribusiness this morning that is looking at Sutter County. I'm hoping that goes somewhere, but that's, I mean, hey, every bit helps. What I'm afraid of is, I'm afraid of this, the tax generated continues to do this and not go on this way just with everything, the way things are going. I believe we're heading towards a recession, if not in one already. And you see the inflation prices and so forth. But like I said, we'll tighten our belts and make the best out of it. Thank you.
Okay. Before I make a couple of comments, Steve, I had a question for you regarding, I know we mentioned some of the concerns, and then you mentioned some ways to address some of those concerns. One of the things I didn't hear from you is like the amount of money in homelessness that has gone up substantially as a way to address the concern. Is there a consideration to lower the amount of funding that we provide for homeless services?
Well, I know, yes. I mean, one of the slides did show the increase in homeless costs. And we are always looking at that. I think at the same time, I know Yuba City is working more and more closely with some of the local nonprofits and planning some additional services. So it is something we're looking at that, how that transition goes and to what level of service can we afford. But I think we're going to look at, at all aspects of non-mandated services and aggressively pursue, as we always have, grant funding for those services. I should have mentioned, too, that over the past several years, the counties received, applied for about $80 million in grant funding and received about $70 million in grant funding. So just so the public is aware, how aggressively we pursue grants, we also have brought on a grant writing consulting firm that we've been using. And I had a meeting Friday with them, bit over an hour, talking about multiple opportunities that can offset costs of projects, anything from dealing with heat and in buildings to roads and rezoning issues. So we are aggressively looking at all different types of funding for a variety of programs.
Okay, thank you for those comments. And actually, you addressed, one of my next questions was regarding grants, you know. I know we've been very aggressive. I think it's like 69 million in grants over, what, four-year period, maybe, right in that range? Which is very aggressive. And I think that's great. I guess maybe after your meetings, we'll be able to sit down and get a determination or some projection on what other grants might be available. Maybe we can become more aggressive. And I know we already have with the hiring of an economic development director and then working with our consultants that you're, you just identified. So, because that's the thing I was really thinking about in this, as you were talking about ways to address, you know, what is the revenue opportunity? You know, we know that it's limited, like you mentioned, from a taxed basis standpoint. But are, is there some of those revenues from, you know, unturned rocks that we can look under and find some of those revenue streams to support some of the, some of the loss on that? And so that, I'm glad, I'm glad that's being addressed as well. And then just when you identified the overall concerns, were there any other suggestions besides, there were like seven main suggestions that you kind of made to address the concerns? And I'm, I'm well aware, there's not like a magic button we can press, otherwise we all would, and resolve the system. But was there anything else that you wanted to mention or not?
One, I wanted to follow up on a comment you just made about bringing on an economic development director. I wanted to mention Scott Powell, who is new to the county and has just been with us for a few months. But he really took on the, what they used to call earmarks. I forget the name of them now. Congressional-directed spending and was very-
Need a smaller, a shorter acronym for that one, but yeah.
And was very aggressive with that. And I think was, happened to arrange a meeting with our congressman, Lamalfa, where I think we were the only jurisdiction that actually got in face-to-face with him when you, when you gentlemen went to cap-to-cap. And there's multiple millions of dollars in opportunities there that we're currently aggressively, even tonight and tomorrow, working on for projects for the county. Beyond that, yeah, revenue is always, in my mind, you know, the better solution than cuts. And we know how thinly staffed we are. And I don't think, you know, solutions that we looked at in the past, and I was here during the recession, well, towards the end of it in 2009, when I started with the county. But we, being government, tend to lag the economy, right? Because the recession is felt by everyday businesses, maybe 2007, 2008, 2009. And then we feel it 2010, 2011. But at that time, we had done furloughs and some different things. And I don't think it was effective. And I don't think that's somewhere where we would want to look, especially with staff being, you know, under market, for the most part, not all staff. But, but I think working closely with our department heads, who they are all the subject matter experts in their field. And they know their budgets even better than we do, even though we spend a lot of time on them. They know what areas that they have savings in that we can look at. And that's what we're looking at now, is that. And then utilizing some special revenue funds. And then overall, we're going to talk strategies over the next several weeks on that gap and continue to be aggressive pursuing revenue opportunities throughout the county, including, as I mentioned, Sutter Point. And looking at, one of the grant opportunities I mentioned would provide maybe $500,000 to $600,000 that would cover the environmental studies needed for rezoning some of the areas to commercial that are closer to the infrastructure, where we could get those rolling sooner than later. So we're trying to continue to be aggressive on all possible revenue fronts. And we're always open to ideas and doing things in new ways. And in fact, I just had a conversation the other day with Neil Hay, our Director of Development Services, on, you know, do we need to look at different ways to do road and bridge repairs? Where, you know, there's certain ways you can do them that they last 100 years and other ways, maybe they last 50. But if the way that it lasts 50 is 10 times cheaper, maybe we're going to have to look at things like that in the meantime. We want to do things once and do it right, but you also have to look at the sheer amount of work that we have to do throughout the county on roads and bridges. And that kind of applies to other departments as well.
Okay, thank you for those comments. And then, so looking at the timeframe, and then you mentioning you're working on all these areas of revenue and then potential cuts for services. And you've addressed sort of your strategy towards addressing the revenue pretty well. And then you've mentioned the fact that most likely, there are going to be some sort of cuts. So the question I have is the prioritization of those cuts. I'm looking at the timeline. I don't see an opportunity, at least in this timeline, for the board, for instance, to come back together for a prioritization workshop to find out, you know, which cuts we're talking about. Is it homelessness first? Are we looking at some other, you know, opportunities for cuts? And so I'm wondering what your strategy is for us to have further input on the prioritization of those cuts. And maybe some more feedback on the revenue, hopefully some more ideas. But, you know, we can look at that as well.
Yeah, great question. So the way with the, our budget process works and we will have a recommended budget prepared. And I'll be working closely with the department heads and their staff on that to get that ready by the end of May, to have it to the printers, to be out to the board, I think publicly by June 7th. So I will continue to have individual conversations with each of you along the way. However, that would probably, the, the presentation of that and then the budget presentation a couple of weeks later will be a good time for the board to then review my recommendations, my office's recommendations. But also, you can still make changes. And our budget hearings aren't until August 20, I believe, or right around there. So that will give time, oh, it's right in front of me. So that will give time to have additional conversations, public conversations with the board, with staff, and with the community on possibilities. And go from there and give us time to refine and make additional recommendations. And, and when we talk service cuts, we always focus, of course, first on working through attrition and shifting people into non-general fund programs. And there are opportunities out there for us to do that. My concern, as I mentioned, is just that there's not enough that the public, I think, will, you know, notice some service reductions and/or slowing of certain services. And I think almost to our detriment, we have been so blessed with great workers that are highly productive that even as evidenced of our staffing compared to other counties, for the most part, we've been very successful in still providing those services, you know, with holding it together by the skin of our teeth. So I just don't think we're at the point where we can continue to do that effectively. And I would rather have maybe fewer services that we provide really well. And I would rather have maybe fewer services that we provide really well than providing services that people are getting frustrated with that maybe we're not able to dedicate the staff time to, to make sure that they're excellent.
Okay, great. Thank you for those comments. Just the last part of that too, I would agree with you. And I just want to tell everybody here, you know, you are amazing for the work that you've been able to pull off for the limited resources that you've been able to work with, you know. And this is no real surprise, we've felt this coming for quite a while. And I think we, everybody has tried and done the best that they can and going through the process. But I will tell you, you know, it's now it's time, when, when, when the going gets tough, the tough get going. And this is you, this is us, right? This is Sutter County. So Sutter Strong, we're here to support you as employees, we're here to support you as your staff. We're here mainly to support our constituents in Sutter County. And we're going to do what we can to help sharpen the pencils, help create more revenue, come up with ideas to generate, to fix, to support the staff in, in the whole budget process. So, you know, we don't want to, this is not a time for panic, but this is a time where we all have to come up with our best ideas and put those ideas forward. So I guess I'm really encouraging you, and I know most of you personally, and you're not shy. So, you know, go ahead and put the ideas forward and let's see what we can come up with. And let's show the world, let's show the other four, or 57 counties that Sutter County is strong and we'll, we'll come out of this strong as well. So thanks again for the presentation. Are there any further comments from the board of supervisors at this point? Okay. Then at this point, any other comments from staff? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and close the budget workshop and everybody have a great evening. Thank you. We're going to, we have a closed session.
We do, yes. Conference of Labor Negotiator, Deborah McKelley, Unrepresented Employee, County Administrator, pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6.
Thank you Gina, I listened. I said, thank you Gina, I heard you.